Okay, I, I'm muted.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and get started. As Ms. Lumentz Wells indicated, we want to get on the board of an update, overview of where we are, what some of the challenges are that we are working with, some of which we are being able, have already overcome or working around, what challenges remain in our path and our path forward. So we've got a PowerPoint that we want to share with you so you'll be able to walk away from this with, with something in your hand. It's a fairly, uh, good amount of information in here. You'd have to try to remember me just going through it and talking about it. Some of it we'll go through more quickly than other parts. I know some of you have, uh, some time commitments to do some other things this morning. So, uh, at this point, let's, let's go through that and we'll try to get all the way to the end and then come back and pick up any questions you might have. Yes, showing. Obviously, our goal, uh, when I say ours, your goal and our goal is to provide as much normalcy, including in-person education and extracurricular activities as is possible for our students, while following the mandates and guidance of the state, local, and public health authorities to ensure the health of our students, our employees, and communities. Any decisions or recommendations will be made based on objective information provided by scientific, public health, and medical experts and sources. While there are other important considerations, including social and emotional well-being, the primary consideration must be the physical safety of our students and our employees. Some of the challenges. Changing conditions. Virus conditions are trending upward. This constantly evolving science. What are the best practices? And some things on which we still are awaiting guidance from DHEC, particularly exclusion from attendance of an employee with a positive test that's been in direct contact with students. Students in direct contact with an employee or other student who has tested positive. Quarantines and timelines for teachers and students with family members who are positive or have been in direct contact with positive cases. Ensuring safety while meeting the needs of the community. The social growth, in-person support versus exposure to risk. The need for adaptability and flexibility. Limits on classroom and building space, bus capacity, and you see the DHEC guidance of 50% really only allows us to efficiently and effectively transport in one trip all of our students with Plan One. Any plan other than that regard requires a second trip in that while it may not duplicate the 90-plus minutes of a, of a regular route, it is not going to cut the route times in half. Probably looking at maybe another hour beyond the original route time to do the second route. Shortage of substitutes that could be exacerbated by more absences and the age of our substitute pool and our difficulty in recruiting new substitutes. Ensuring important health and safety protocols are followed without overburdening teachers and other school staff. Determining, communicating, and implementing a consistent and appropriate response to students who consistently refuse to follow protocols or who threaten to cough, sneeze, or touch others. Possibilities of bullying and peer pressure among students and staff to break with protocol. Recognition that new norms are hard to get used to and human nature and habit will result in forgotten or ignored protocols without there being any ill intent. Communication of expectations, restrictions, and protocols to all stakeholders, including parents who are not plugged into the communication system for whom we do not have accurate addresses or phone numbers, or who do not want to be contacted. The order and scope of communications, ensuring all employee groups have knowledge they need that impacts them and that they learn expectation from supervisors instead of third-hand. We cannot tell everyone everything because priority pieces end up being lost in an overwhelming avalanche of information. The increased cost of, of funding additional absences or CARES Act leave, which is leave that is mandated by the federal government, provided to employees that can be used up through the end of this calendar year that in effect adds time to their already accrued sick leave if they choose to use it. Ensuring the supply chain of sanitizers, disinfectants, et cetera. Building community support for schools when the divide is so great between those who fear for their child's safety and those who want to return to normal. Finding ways to keep our partners engaged and connected to our district and students. Mentors, shadowing, internships, et cetera, when we have set strong access limitations in place to protect students and employees. The simple management of all these additional protocols. Let's look at the change we've seen since the start of the emergency closure. On 15 March, we had one reported case, one possible case. There were no estimated cases and no deaths. On July the 12th, these, this information is provided by DHEC. We had 7,137 reported cases, an estimated nearly 44,000, and a total fatality toll of 104 individuals. Again, the source of this information is South Carolina DHEC as of July the 12th, July the 12th, 2020. And it shows the reported COVID cases by age group. If you look at that, you'll see a little bit contrary to what some individuals might believe, think, or suppose. Uh, we have 22% of them in the age range 21 to 30, and 11% in the age range 11 to 20. Then you can see, uh, the breakout there in the various age categorizations. We have some other information for you later in here about what our workforce looks like broken down along those same lines. All right, these are the reported deaths. Again, DHEC's the source, July the 12th, 2020. And you see that obviously as the, uh, age category, categories increase, there is obviously an accounting there for a greater number of fatalities. With nearly, I guess, nearly 86% in the 61 and above age group. Since Jan. 1, there's been a 436.5% increase in newly reported COVID-19 cases among the 21 to 30 age group, again representing 22% of the total confirmed cases in the state. All right, again, as I said to you, we're going to share some information with you about how do our employees fit within those categories that DHEC reports the disease information? So you'll see that we have, uh, seven, uh, 7% of our employees are 21 to 30, 17.6%, 31 to 40, 27%, 41 to 50, 30.7%, 51 to 60, 14.8% 61 to 70, 71 and above, well over 2% of other employees. Now, when you look at our teacher workforce, you'll see that about 20% of them are 21 to 30, about 28% are 31 to 40, about 28% are 41 to 50, about 18% are 51 to 60. Then we have about 5 and 1/2% that are 61 or older. You also see in that category, in those charts, the corresponding information related to the total percent of COVID cases in those age breakdowns and the total percentage of deaths within those categories. And you can see where our employee, our workforce falls within each of those categories. Now, part of the challenge we talked about earlier is dealing with an exposure or an illness on the part of a teacher and our ability to backfill that teacher's classroom. So this gives you an idea of where in age our substitutes fit. 21 to 30, 17%, 31 to 40, about 17%, 41 to 50, 21%, 51 to 60, 18%, 61 to 70, 18 point, almost 19%, 71 to 80, 7 and 1/2%. So you can see pretty quickly how those categories align with the disease reporting categories with DHEC. We have 1,666 substitute teachers. On a good day in a regular year, we have a sufficient number. But there are days in a regular school year, absent any concern for coronavirus, that we do not have a sufficient number of substitutes. So that's a challenge in a regular school year. It becomes even more so in dealing with this environment. Here's some information. Some of you may have seen this. Uh, Harvard University produced some information on July the 12th. And it, and it's, in their opinion, these researchers, uh, South Carolina need to stay-at-home orders in 60% of their counties. It identified Greenville County as one of 27 South Carolina counties at a red risk alert, considered the tipping point. Uh, Johns Hopkins University researchers write, "South Carolina is the third highest state for percentage of positive tests during the last week." Now, that's percentage of positive tests and ahead of any other nation. Over the weekend, DHEC reported the first pediatric death associated with COVID-19 in the state and reported two South Carolina children under the age of 10 having been diagnosed with multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, or MIS-C. 80% of patients with that condition require treatment in intensive care. This is a little more information that you might want to link on and look at related to the Harvard Health Institute's information that we shared with you. There is another slide, again, same source, showing those counties, uh, that they, uh, believe referred to at the, uh, most highest risk or highest greatest risk. Again, you can click on that link if you'd like to look at more information there. Now, this is a New York Times report from July the 8th of 2020, where they looked at places with the most new coronavirus cases per million residents in a seven-day look back, so July 1st to July 8th. And it shows South Carolina ranked third in the world behind only the states of Arizona and Florida and slightly ahead of Bahrain, Louisiana, Qatar, and Oman. As you know, the, one of the things that we are looking at is the DHEC reports, the DHEC metrics on the incident rate, the trend of that rate, the percent positive test. So this is the two-week look back that was issued yesterday afternoon. And it shows our incident rate in Greenville County being high at 462.6 per 100,000 population. The trend is high, i.e. it is increasing. And the percent of positive tests, which is 18.3%, again, considered high. Our overall community spread rating in accord with the DHEC matrix is high. Number of South Carolina counties rated high is 45, those rated mediums 1. And that's after yesterday afternoon's rating. Well, remember, we've had discussion about the Accelerate Ed Task Force. Both Dr. Turner and Mr. Saylor served on that Accelerate Ed Task Force and served on two different subcommittees within it. This is the language directly from the Accelerate Ed Task Force recommendation. And they talk about three models and they relate them to the level of spread. Traditional. In this scenario, health guidelines and facility considerations allow for all students and staff to return to a school building, to reopen the school year, and during the school calendar due to low or no spread of COVID-19 in the area and low to no positive cases within the school building. Model two, the hybrid model. This situation is most likely to be experienced during a period of medium spread of COVID-19 in the area and a medium number of positive cases within the school building. Model three, virtual. In this scenario, all students and staff are unable to return to a physical building due to high spread of COVID-19 in the area and high numbers of positive cases within the school building. Again, those are the Accelerate Ed recommendations, uh, related to types of instruction and organization correlated to low, medium, and high spread. Now, if you look to the Center for Disease Control's guiding principles, broken down into their categories of lowest risk, more risk, and highest risk. Lowest risk, students and teachers engage in virtual-only classes, activities, and events. More risk, small in-person classes, activities, and events. Groups of students stay together and with the same teacher throughout across school days, and groups do not mix. Students remain at least six feet apart and do not share objects. Highest risk, full-sized in-person classes, activities, and events. Students are not spaced apart, share classroom materials or supplies, and mix between classes and activities. Within the last couple of weeks, you've seen a release from the American Academy of Pediatrics Guidance for School Reentry. It was released on June the 25th. They talk about school policies being flexible and nimble in responding to new information, one of the challenges that we have. Encourages that strategies be developed that can be revised and adapted depending on the level of viral transmission in the school and throughout the community in close communication with state and or local public health authorities. Policies should be practical, feasible, and appropriate for child and adolescent developmental stage. Special considerations should be made, especially for our vulnerable populations with the goal of safe return to school. School policies should be guided by supporting the overall health and well-being of all children, adolescents, their families, and their communities. With the above principles in mind, keeping in mind all those things that they talked about, the AAP strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming year should start with a goal of having students physically present in school. As our policy, uh, procedure, protocol, that is our objective, that they, we start with the goal of having students physically present in school, again tempered with the safety of our students. And I think you probably have already noticed what's missing from this is any reference to employee health, which obviously has a great consideration on our mind protecting the health and the safety of our employees. Now, several groups and organizations, I think, had a similar concern to the one I just expressed is that guidance really doesn't address the safety and health of employees. And, uh, so a joint statement is being issued by the American Association of Pediatrics, the American Federation of Teachers, the NEA, and AASA, the School Superintendent Association, on July the 10th, in that we all share the goal of children returning safely to school this fall. And we all, all of us, share that goal. Our organizations are committed to doing everything we can do so that students have the opportunity to safely resume in-person learning. Returning to school is important for the healthy development and well-being of children, but we must pursue reopening in a way that is safe for all students, teachers, and staff. Science should drive decision-making on safely reopening schools, and public health agencies must make recommendations based on evidence, not politics. We should leave it to health experts to tell us when the time is best, open up school buildings, and listen to educators and administrators to shape how we do. Local school leaders, public health experts, educators, and parents must be at the center of decisions about how and when to reopen schools, taking into account the spread of COVID-19 in their communities and the capacities of school districts to adopt safety protocols to make in-person learning safe and feasible. A one-size-fits-all approach is not appropriate for return-to-school decisions. For instance, schools in areas with high levels of COVID-19 community spread should not be compelled to reopen against the judgment of local experts. Share with you our parent survey results. Now, this is, these results, because of the timing of our survey, you will recall, occurred before this great spike in increase, great spike in increase in positive tests. And again, the, the survey was headed that our intent would be to be in school. If we can't be in school and there's not a vaccine available, are you comfortable with your child returning to school? And about 45% of our parents said yes. 12% of them said no. And 43% of them were unsure. And I think we can all readily identify, particularly with the unsure category because there is so much uncertainty around this. And certainly understand those people who believe we need to return right away and those who just don't believe it's safe to come back. And again, we've developed an op, an option for the ones who just don't believe it's safe to come back at all in our virtual program. In parent survey, again, if we, if we can't have a, a regular opening, 78% prefer a blend of e-learning and in-person to a blend, uh, a blend in preference to 100% e-learning. 61% indicated they have childcare options or the ability to work from home on days their children are not in school. And 63% supported 100% e-learning, uh, during the three weeks between Thanksgiving and winter break. The question was in there because that very closely mirrors what a lot of colleges and universities were planning at the time we conducted this survey. Our employee survey results, and you see there that there, there's very, very small number of our employees that responded to this survey who had little or no concern. We had 7,418 responses out of, you, just under 10,000 employees. Then we got about 36% said they have some concerns, but believe it's time to return to normal with reasonable precautions in place. Then we have 45% who have serious concerns, balanced by the need to educate the students that we should repopulate schools with precautions in place such as social distancing, hand washing, temperature screening, and mandated quarantines in certain circumstances. Then we have serious concerns from 16% of our employees who do not believe we should consider repopulating school buildings in, in any way at this time. Now, that survey timeframe fell about a week or so behind the parent survey timeframe. Now, this is the teacher response. If we are not able to have full-time in-person school, do you prefer a hybrid scenario or 100% e-learning? 71% preferred a blend and about 29% preferred, uh, 100% e-learning. Now, again, that's only teachers. And that is a very high percentage of respondents among our teaching staff, which is around under 6,580. So our parent option falls in two categories. Traditional program, where our objective is 100% in-person education. But we have schedules developed that could shift between 100% and 0%, including two days a week and one day a week. E-learning obviously would occur in the zero category. In other words, when we're not in school at all, e-learning would occur 100% of the time. On the days of non-attendance, we would have e-learning support. So if students were there on a one or a two, it would be e-learning support. Parent option number two is the virtual program. It's 100% e-learning. There is no variation in schedule. And we have dedicated virtual teachers at the elementary and middle school level, 100%. At the high school level, assigned by class period. We have around, I believe, as of yesterday noon, about 6,500 enrollees in the virtual program. 6,500. We've established a July the 27th cutoff. So if you signed up for it, you could remove your name before July the 27th. If you don't remove your name, then you're committing to that program. On the other side of that, if you want to ensure a slot in that program, you need to have signed up for it by July the 27th. After that, we would allow students to join it, space available. Again, these slides kind of reinforce uh, what I've shared with you. If you have a chance to look at the chat, Jeff McCoy is sharing some information with you. We now are at 7,330 students signed up for the virtual program. So you see within the traditional program, you shift 100% in-person, hybrid, 100% e-learning schedules as conditions warrant. Students keep the same teachers and schedule shifts. Students are learning in schools. Believe we, we skipped some slides there. Thank you. Students are learning in school with a teacher for as much of the time as is safe to do so. It is best for families who hope to have students in school for at least some portion of the time and for students and parents who can manage schedule changes as the year progresses. There you see our zero, one, two, and five-day attendance plan in our destination return to school. Those are in-person attendance plans where students are divided throughout the district into one of four groups. You all have already seen that. We've released this to the public. Uh, so I think we won't spend a lot of time going through that chart, but at the end, we'll try to answer any questions you might have about it. Virtual program, dedicated teaching staff. Now, that number jumped, the one I just shared with you jumped by what, about 800 students? I think as of yesterday, we needed 139 teachers. Obviously, that number's changed. It's a full-day schedule. It does require year-long commitment. However, we would consider transfers after the However, we would consider transfers after the first semester, and we may consider them at a nine weeks, as long as space is available without sending our in-person class sizes over the limits we've established for them. We believe this is best for students and families with health concerns and for those who want or need a certainty and predictability in their schedule. This is what the virtual program for an elementary student looks like. That's also what the program would look like for an elementary child if we had to go to a zero-attendance day. Now, at the middle school level, their schedule will look like a middle school schedule. You can't lay it out just like this. It would, it would mirror the kind of schedule they have in middle school. And at high school, their schedule would look like a high school schedule. Again, it's more the delivery of the instruction, the techniques, and the strategies than it is everybody doing their own schedule. We want to set a framework so parents have a consistent expectation of contact and how the program looks and will work. And that's important in order for them to make a good decision about it. Here's a kind of side-by-side description of our virtual program and e-learning. So we want to try to convey to the community as best we can. When we talk about the virtual program, that means you're doing e-learning all the time. You're being taught virtual. If you're in traditional school setting, in-person attendance, depending on if we're in a zero, a one, or a two, you could be doing e-learning as part of your traditional school program. So when we say e-learning, that's the delivery of instruction virtually. When we say the virtual program, you're getting all your instruction through e-learning. And we also have some provisions in there for participation in some things that might not be done virtually. Here's a little chart that gives you some information of what we believe are the advantages of each option. And this is the zero, one, and two, and the five. I think you can, I'm not going to go through all of those. But you see, the biggest advantage in hybrid is we can maintain. If you look at bullet number one, we know in a one, we can maintain six feet, and we believe with great confidence, we can do that in a two. But we probably wouldn't want to start in a two. We'd want to start in a one to make sure we were able to completely work through the protocols and sufficiently train our students in how to handle the protocols. All right, and here are the challenges. It, with every, it's just like a, a, any, any coin, there are two sides to it. Obviously, there's a downside. These are those things. Most of which you probably have already thought, there's, that would be a concern. All right, maintaining contact, this has been the subject of considerable discussion in the last several weeks, particularly at the state level. By May twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty, only eighty-four students in grades three through twelve, which where we had connectivity, electronic connectivity, are point one-four percent of students in those grade levels had no contact with teachers or other school personnel. Statewide, the figure was over two percent. What you have to, have to think about in the context you have to put that in, and I think that was missing in some of the state-level discussion, although I know that the state superintendent presented that information. We have tran, great transancy among our students in a normal school year. These are the, this is the most current information we have. That's why it says November nineteen, from November twen, twenty-eighteen to November nineteen. That, that's the year period for which we have a look back. All right, so pre-COVID, in the preceding year, pre-COVID, eleven percent of our students lived at a different address in November of nineteen than they did in November of eighteen. Eight and a half percent of the students enrolled in nineteen were not enrolled in eighteen. So they moved in. And we're not, we're excluding there the ones that graduated out and the ones that came in new to the system. All right, another eight percent of students enrolled in Greenwood County Schools in November eighteen were no longer enrolled in November nineteen. And sometimes, because of the way families might handle that leaving, we have great difficulty in finding out where they went. Particularly challenging in this COVID environment where we know, having eventually tracked some of these folks down, they moved out of state and didn't register in the new school in the other state. So that, that just puts that in context. We don't want to lose sight of any student, and we put forth great effort at the school level and the district level to maintain contact. And you see that listed, kind of three levels there. Individual teachers call, email, message students and their parents who weren't logging into Google Classroom or otherwise not participating. Then we had school-level efforts made by counselors, administrators, mental health counselors, and other personnel to contact students who have not responded. Then if we still didn't get contact, we had a district-level outreach, primarily through student services, attendants, social workers, interventionists, school resource officers. We had individuals going out, making contact, in some cases, in-person contact, in other cases, by telephone, by text, by various means to identify and find these students. That's one of the reasons we had such a far lower rate or percentage of students unaccounted for than other districts. Now that we will have students with, at all grade levels having Chromebooks, that should even more greatly facilitate maintaining contact with them and their parents. Let's look a little bit at the DHEC guidance for school operations. Social distancing. To the extent possible, maintain at least six feet of distance between each person. Avoid students congregating in common areas. For example, ask students to eat meal in the classroom or the mix in the cafeteria or the common area. And then they talk to, they give you some additional guidance underneath that. Limit people present to only students and essential faculty and staff. Social distancing continued. Avoid assemblies or other congregate events. Encourage, encourage frequent hand washing with soap and water for at least twenty seconds. Soap and water are not available, and hands are not visibly dirty. Use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer that contains at least sixty percent alcohol. Strongly encourage faculty and staff to wear masks or fall face coverings as much as possible. Consideration may be given to recommending them for students. Fall face covering should not be used on children under two years old, anyone who has trouble breathing, or anyone unable to remove the face covering without assistance. Bus transportation. DHEC guidance. The number of students on the bus should be a maximum of fifty percent of standard capacity. And you see some further guidance regarding that. Including loading the bus from back to front. Have the drivers wear face coverings or face masks. And consideration recommending them for students. In addition to the DHEC guidance and information we get from CDC, we also are in frequent contact with and get advice, information, and recommendation from medical personnel at St. Francis and Prisma. And while they might not issue a public statement as to, we recommend this course of action, i.e., this schedule, what they do offer to us is commentary on the appropriateness of our procedures, the effectiveness, effectiveness of those procedures. And if we were to say to them, does this schedule, in your mind, address the appropriate safety concerns? And you believe we're appropriately protecting faculty and students? They would give us a response to that. Again, they're not going to publicly endorse a particular configuration, but they have given us very valuable guidance and information. We also have sought and continue to seek information from MUSC and other resources. So our plans at this point will require all staff and all students except pre-K to grade one and those with medical developmental justifications. Anytime they are in transition, are not able or not able to maintain a six-foot distance, they would be required to be masked. Recession would take place, but without access to place structures, and maintaining a six-foot distance unless masked. Bus transportation, fifty percent capacity. We'd load back to front, unload front to back. Sharing seats only with household members. And we have yet to fully determine the masking requirements for students, but the drivers would wear a mask. Meals on a one, we would likely serve those in the cafeteria. It becomes a challenge for fans to get meal service into the classroom. But as you can imagine, on a traditional school schedule, they have scheduled classes to be in the lunchroom in accord with their normal sites. So we should be able to easily, on a day one, with twenty-five percent of our students, be able to take those students safely into the lunchroom, put them in the space normally reserved for a one-hundred percent class, spread them out in that same designated space, and maintain the appropriate social distance. In plans two and five, it is most likely that we would serve in the classroom. In special education, sports, extracurriculars, and other concerns, we're in the process of finalizing those things. And you'll see here our reopening plan. You see what we've done up until July the ninth. Yesterday, we had feedback from a parent group that had a hundred and fifty participants in three sessions. So as you can see pretty quickly here, our strategy was develop a draft plan, utilizing our in-house experts in the areas that are affected and getting expertise in public health and medical from the appropriate external organizations. Putting that together in a draft, then getting feedback to that draft. So yesterday, parent day, we had a hundred and fifty. These were individuals who principals forwarded to us names from each school to ensure we had a broad cross-section across the county and across levels. Today, we will be getting feedback from the whole teacher form. On the fifteenth, we will do revisions based on that feedback. On the sixteenth, we will give or obtain feedback from all the principals. A group of principals is involved in the original development. Not every principal, but a representative group. So having made the revisions based on the community feedback and the teacher feedback, we'll get principal feedback. On July the twentieth, we will finalize the document based on the principal feedback. And on the twenty-first, we plan to re-release the final document to the public, which then gives them six more days to sign up for the virtual program if, after they see the requirements and the precautions they wish to do so. Communication. We're also continuing this series of Facebook Live events, starting on July the twenty-one. Don't, don't, don't try to match up the order they're listed with twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. It might not necessarily work that way. But beginning July twenty-one, Tracy Hogan will be live addressing special ed. Colonel Carlin will be live addressing cleaning, disinfecting, and HVAC systems. Philip Davy or Adam James will be live discussing transportation. And Janet Loggie will be live discussing health services. Again, the virtual program deadline is July the twenty-seventh. We would make a public announcement regarding our intended schedule for the start of school in late July, early August. And this last item, we have on the calendar right now, a beginning date for students of August the seventeenth. We are considering a one-week delay, primarily focused on two things. One, this huge number of requests we're now getting for the virtual program. The need to staff that program. And as you know, we have to staff it with teachers that we reshuffle, reschedule, because now classes, enrollments in schools will decrease because they're in the virtual program. So we need time to arrange the staffing of the virtual program. And principals need time to rearrange the schools and the roles of the classes within the schools. And at the middle and high school level, adjust multi-period schedules to reflect those changes. So what we have looked at is the opportunity, the option. We've discussed this internally as we bring in this plan to a conclusion or that we might delay the beginning of school for students from August the seventeenth to August the twenty-fourth. If you think about it, if we close the virtual program on July the twenty-seventh, and the numbers in it are going up, like they've gone up in the last two or three days, then there's a tremendous amount of work to be done. And we want to try to do that in a way that it would create the least disruption to groups of students in either program by this shifting of teachers back and forth. The other thing that can be done with a one-week delay is it can be absorbed within the current end date of the school calendar. Because we have three weather makeup days in our calendar. We are now an approved e-learning district so that any absence from regular school attendance can be mitigated by e-learning. That gives us three days inside the currently established days. We have a scheduled day off the day before Election Day. And we have an in-service day, the, the day before Election Day is an in-service or work day. We have another one, January the fifteenth. So we could pick up the five days without adversely impacting families and employees on the other end of the school's schedule. And it would offer us the opportunity to make sure that, to the best of our ability, we get everything settled, where we don't have students believing, this is my teacher. Then the next day or so, no, this is not my teacher, this is the teacher. We're going to try to minimize that as much as possible. The other advantage that is, it gives us one more week to see if the trend continues to be this, or if it does this, or if it begins to do this. So we believe there are some advantages in us doing that. That would be a decision we would make within the next week or so to ensure that families have adequate time to prepare for that. We would likely not change the teacher reporting date. And that week that we would gain between the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth, if we are able to do the five additional days of instruction in person, which is the state requirement for it to be funded, we would do them the week of the seventeenth with teachers who would volunteer to come in to handle that responsibility. Otherwise, the teachers would have a little break in there between their preparing for school to start and the actual first day with students. So we're seriously considering that one week. So we're seriously considering that one week. There are districts in the state. That have, uh, have moved two weeks, have moved three weeks. Uh, we, we do not see a great advantage in moving two or three weeks. We believe the greater advantage to us would be if we do anything to have a movement of, of one week. Now. Looking at considerations and next steps. We will end. With that up on the screen, the presentation part. And what questions or comments or, uh, issues that you might have that we might address. I noted that several of you asked some questions and the appropriate person responded in the chat. Uh, when, uh, when you asked that question, but, uh, whatever questions you might have. Then we will, we will try to provide an answer for those.
Oh, Burke, um, I'll start with a question, um, that most recently comes to mind. I thought you said that we would make sure. That people were able to give their, to know what the schedule would be. Before they had to make a decision about whether to enroll in the virtual program. Is that correct? Burke, you're still on mute. There we go.
I'm sorry. But what we said was that there are a lot of questions. That they wanted answered, like, well, you have to wear masks. Uh, what would the start of school look like? Sitting here today, given the, the rising case numbers. Now, the number yesterday was a little bit lower than the day before, but I don't think one day could be a trend. We need to see what that trend might be. Uh, right now, it would appear that either a zero or a one would be how we would have to need to start school.
So, so I guess I'm saying, when you, when it says make public announcement regarding schedule for start of school in late July. Or early August. Um, could that be changed to a specific date? So that it, they would know before the virtual program signup deadline. Instead of after?
Well, the, the problem with it, we're, we're, we're saying to people right now, the, the, really what it looks like is zero or one. Cause if you make a call today, a lot could change between now and August the seventeenth or August the twenty-fourth. If you'll recall. This, this huge spike. I mean, we, we were going along at a very low level and all of a sudden we had this huge spike in, uh, positive tests. Is it likely that we'd have a huge drop? It's probably not likely we'd have a huge drop, a dramatic drop at one time, but we could have a downward trend. So any prediction that's more than a week outside becomes less accurate. But right now, it was saying very unlikely that we could begin school with anything other. Than a zero or a one, absent some trending data going down.
So if there was trending data. And going down, but we were still. High on all three measures, it would still have to be zero. I mean, how, I guess the question is. How much of a movement would we have to see to go from high to medium risk?
You'd have to have considerable movement. However, we, we believe, given all the protocols we have in place. That there might be a circumstance in high, in a downward trend where we could do a one, because of all the protocols.
If it was just a one, okay. Otherwise.
Yes, because we can, in that one, we have the six feet of social distancing.
Right.
Uh, all, all those other things. Uh, so what we believe. That, that we could safely do a one in a downward trend. And I'm not sure that's something you'd want to do if you're still doing this, if you're still dramatically increasing. If we.
Okay, or just increasing perhaps, if it's already pretty dramatic. But let me ask, um, this question about the one day. If I'm a parent. Desperately wanting my child to return to school. And the choice is for one day versus zero days. What academic? Advantage can you see? To just being in school for one day? Or is it meant to be more of a social advantage at that point, given that? Or, or maybe it's training people about how to be together under these new circumstances that could be accomplished in that one day. But just. Show me in your thinking what the value of just one day might be.
Well, you, you were already, you were already beginning to answer your question with some of those, uh, some parts of your question. Uh, for, for one, it's the social and emotional value of being present in school. And I'm not necessarily saying that's the, the top party that is, that's one of the considerations. Another consideration is, you know, perhaps a little further down the list would be the introduction of those protocols. In other words, if we were going to go to a, a two. We would be better off to start with a one and move to the two, so we could train everybody the things they need to do in a two circumstance. Because they're going to be a little closer together in a two. The biggest advantage is the opportunity for the child and the student to develop a better. Relationship, having had some in-person contact. One of the few advantages to what happened to us at the end of last year. Was the fact that teachers and students already had a relationship that they had established over three quarters of the school year. Before they parted company in person. Uh, so that those. That ability to build that relationship, that's going to be a challenge in a virtual program. Their, their way, teachers will figure that out. But the ability to build the relationship. Some of the things are just better taught and better learned in person, particularly with our youngest children. So I think there is an instructional advantage and there's a social, emotional advantage. To at least being able to do a one, and a one is a step down the road to being a five.
Okay. And my last question, and I'll turn it over to, to my colleagues, but while I have it on my mind. Um, what do you think that the, um? If it's. The training that teachers will receive. I would imagine that if we're answering questions to parents, we would say that. You know, I imagine that sixteen percent who really don't want to go back and the teachers. And the twelve percent, which is increasing, really don't want to come to school, that. There's kind of a natural match occurring for those who might be inclined to get that training and do the virtual. But the, the complaints that we had about the virtual or the e-learning not being strong enough. What are we going to do to help teachers and make sure that what they're delivering? Really is as strong as it can be? If they're not really inclined that way.
Sure. I, I'm going to go ahead and kind of start the answer, then I'm going to ask Jeff McCoy to fill in some, some more specifics related to the actual training of the teachers. One, one thing, it would be nice to assume that the exact number we need. Would be reduced in each school and it would be those people that want to teach virtually. So far, rolling it out there to who would like to apply to teach virtually, that hasn't happened so far. Now perhaps it will. At some point, we're probably going to have to assign some people to it. One thing we would encourage teachers to do. We have some number of teachers who are concerned about childcare for your young children. Uh, we have the ability, uh, Jeff has been able to procure some technology and facilitate it, that those virtual. Program teachers will be able to teach from home. So one would think that's an opportunity to help someone. And we would encourage our teachers to look at it from that standpoint, that they would be in their home with their child. Now, obviously they got to do the teaching, but that might be helpful to someone with young children. And we would hope it would be helpful to, to people to whom technology has great appeal. One of the issues though is, you know, quite honestly, our teachers. The vast majority of whom greatly enjoy and, and benefit from the.